Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the East Brady Wine Supervisors Township Supervisors Board of, excuse me, good morning, everybody, welcome to the East Brady Wine Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, April 2nd, 8:00 a.m. Just a reminder for today, a recording device will be used during the meeting, and I would like to open it up with public comment for agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject with a point of order regarding the agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting to be recognized to ask that the Board of Supervisors consider amending your agenda this morning. As you know, Act 65 of 2021, which took effect in August of last year, requires municipalities to post agendas for public meetings on their websites 24 hours in advance. Staff has done so with the agenda that's in your packet and projected on the screen and on the website. The act provides a mechanism for amending agendas by majority action of the board after first stating the reason for the amendment. I respectfully ask the board to consider amending the agenda to add item 7D, known as Resolution Number 7 of 2022, rescinding Resolution 3 of 2021, which authorized the return of excess condemned land and authorizing the township administration and consultants to comply with a court order dated April 4th, 2022. The reason for the late addition to this agenda is that this recent court order requires immediate action and that the resolution in question was not prepared in time to appear as an action item on the published agenda.
Understood. Do I have a motion?
I will move that we amend the agenda for the meeting on April 7th of 2022 to include the recommended resolutions.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to switch the screen to the amended agenda, and now, thank you for humoring my interruption, it would be appropriate to ask for public comment on agenda items.
Yes, in the Rules for Conduct of Public Meeting established by Resolution 2008, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Do we have any public comment?
Sirs, if I may?
Absolutely.
I'd like to introduce Derek Klaas, he's in the back of the room here, he's been promoted to the job foreman position, and welcome him to the new position.
Congratulations, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comment, we will go ahead and move on to old business, I'm sorry, we'll go on to the minutes of the previous meetings. Approval for the March 17th Board of Supervisors PM meeting minutes.
I move we approve the March 17th Board of Supervisors evening meeting minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, old business. Proposal of facilitating the Planning Commission review of application for variances or special exceptions and the Planning Commission's request to testify before the zoning hearing board. I'll turn that over to Luke for that one.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Including in your packet is a rehashing of a prior manager's report, making a recommendation for amendments to our procedures for processing applications before the zoning hearing board. I'm going to rely on Tom at various points in my discussion here. Let me start with, what was the procedure prior to January of 2021? Every applicant seeking relief from the zoning hearing board first appeared on the agenda of the Board of Supervisors and of the Planning Commission before appearing before the zoning hearing board. In January of 2021, in relation with the Board of Supervisors, we revised that procedure to not require the applicant's attendance at either the Planning Commission or at the Board of Supervisors. The Planning Commission is seeking an opportunity to review applications at one of their public meetings prior to a zoning hearing board meeting, and when appropriate, ask the Board of Supervisors for permission to intervene in, or to make, present evidence at a zoning hearing on behalf of the township. A late addition to your packet here, I've got just kind of a worksheet that shows the timeline and the nature of the dilemma here. If you'll humor me and imagine the experience of an applicant who on Monday, the 9th, in this illustration submits an application for a hearing before the zoning hearing board, their first opportunity before the zoning hearing board would be those calendar dates that are marked in blue on your worksheet here. So you can see that they could appear on the month number two, date number 31. If they were required to make a presentation before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission shown in green and the Board of Supervisors shown in yellow, their earliest opportunity to go before the zoning hearing would be on day 59. So, in an effort to facilitate this, my proposal is if the Board of Supervisors would like on occasion members of the Planning Commission to present at the zoning hearing board on behalf of the township, that we restructure the regular meeting times to facilitate faster And, Tom, do you want to chime in about the role of the, both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors in requests for variances?
Sure, I'd be glad to. The township is automatically a party for every zoning hearing. That's provided by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. So, the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the township has the right to participate or not participate in every zoning hearing board application and hearing. In my experience, in order for you to make that determination, perhaps obvious, you need to know what the application is about, and in order to do that, someone needs to make a presentation to you, typically the applicant. In some municipalities, that presentation by the applicant is initially made to the Planning Commission, and they make a recommendation or comments to the Board of Supervisors. So that's the purpose of doing this, and I told the Planning Commission last evening that if an applicant appears before the zoning hearing board and there's no one else there to make a presentation or make comments or raise issues, oftentimes the zoning hearing board tends to believe, and this is not critical of our board or any other board, that perhaps no one is opposed to this, maybe there aren't any concerns, so I suppose we can grant it. And sometimes that is always not the proper course. And you don't, the board doesn't need to take a position on every application, the applicant may come before you, and it appears to be rather simple, and then you could say, well, we're not taking any position on the application, we're not participating. Some are more complex, and you may at that time authorize, typically it's the township solicitor, to go to the hearing and participate. And the participation might not be in terms of opposition, it may be in terms of, these are the issues we see, and we recommend that if the board, the zoning hearing board's inclined to grant this, then we would suggest that you attach or impose these conditions on any approval. So that's the process, and that process is followed in many municipalities, and frankly, in some municipalities, it's not done.
Not, no.
So, it's up to the board whether they want to. The Planning Commission was almost unanimous that it thought it was a good idea to allow participation by the township, or at least have presentations so we can make a determination, or they can make a determination, you can make a determination of whether you want to participate. Thank you.
Any input from the board?
Oh, and one other thing, the reason that Luke pointed out the 59th day, the Municipalities Planning Code requires that the hearing be scheduled within 60 days of the filing of the application, and that's why we have some time constraints. And I think Luke's goal was if you're willing to do this, that we expedite the process as much as possible, that we don't delay the applicant for the full 60 days.
I am in favor of expediting the process, I'll start with the last comment, but I'm also in favor of changing the meeting schedule so that if there is wanted participation and input from the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission should be our representative to do that, since they are very familiar with what the overall plan and the zonings are. So I would, it doesn't mean that the supervisors wouldn't also participate, but they're not going to know about the hearings unless we change the dates around so they can get the input to review it. So, I'm in favor of making this change, and I think it will be a service to not only our citizens, but it'll make better planning choices, as well as let the zoning hearing board that there are some things that we do have a position on, or maybe that we want to testify to. Thank you.
Jason?
I have no questions.
I would agree with Carl on this. I think it can only help, there's no negative in my opinion. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the, is it a resolution?
No, this would just be a motion directing staff for how to handle applications.
I move that we adopt the proposal to change the meeting dates and institute anything else we need to get input into the zoning hearing board.
Okay, I think maybe it would be prudent to include that require applicants to appear before the Planning Commission, and if necessary, the Board of Supervisors to review zoning hearing board applications.
With said language, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. That's why we have a solicitor there, Tom, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to Luke again for the electronic meeting packets.
Yes, thank you. The last meeting, the board directed me to make a recommendation on a manner to facilitate electronic meeting packets. For this meeting only, we've been kind of doing a demonstration of exactly what this could look like. I'm on the township's website, on the Agenda Center module, and I'm going to click on a meeting, a previous agenda that's posted on our website. If you click on it, you would go to the agenda, so this was the March PM meeting of the Board of Supervisors. For this meeting, it's a little bit different experience, if you click on it, you now get a list of the complete digital packet. At this point, you can click on any of the elements of the packet that are before the board. Conversely, you can, in this dropdown, select to view the whole packet, and the software will consolidate all elements of the packet in a digital format, so that anyone in the audience with Wi-Fi or an internet-connected device would have the complete board's packet. I think a mechanism by which to distribute an electronic packet is only one part of the problem here, or the proposal. The other part would be how would, in lieu of having printed copies, the board use an electronic version of a packet? And my proposal would be that every spot at the dais here, and there are 10 spaces at the front of the room, have a laptop or a tablet assigned to it, and whatever board or body is meeting here would use the electronic, the website, to navigate the packet. That ends my proposal, I think I would be remiss if I didn't point out a few things to consider for the board in so doing. Our IT consultant is not a fan of inexpensive throwaway tablets up here at the front, and so we're probably looking at more like $1,000 per spot up here, so you're looking at a lot of PC purchases. Second is, I've had some time to actually play around with what the experience is like in meeting, having electronic packets, and I can say that even as a fan of technology, it is a very clunky experience. Many people who volunteer on our boards take notes on individual items in their packet. Many individuals who either staff or volunteer at our bodies frequently flip back and forth between packet materials, which is not easily facilitated in an electronic format. I don't, I guess I don't see an easy alternative to having a large printed packet for every member of the board before the meeting. But, as the earlier presentation I made does reference how it would be possible. So, I leave it to the board to direct staff to begin posting packet materials online and/or also phase out the paper printed copies of agendas for your meetings.
The only input that I could have is there are some redundant paper trails, for instance, the approval of the minutes from the past meeting. We already all had a hard copy of that, and then we have another hard copy today for the approval. I would think that that could be put online and taken out of the equation, so that would be one thing. The second thing I would suggest is, if there was a problem with adding to the agenda at the last minute, then perhaps keeping the original agenda on, and again, I'm just giving ideas right now, keeping the original agenda on the laptop, and then any additions that came in at the last minute were past the original posting of the agenda would be in a hard copy via paper. So you might have a hard copy of your agenda for the day, and any additions, and then subtract out the past approval of minutes that we already had, that could be online. But I'm, again, I'm throwing ideas out.
In addition to Kyle's ideas, they all sound good. I've already learned in the first three months here not to print things out, that I know I'm going to get a hard copy. But I do want to, and as you know, Luke, I've been asking to try to get the packet information out to the supervisors as soon as possible in the meeting weeks, so we have time to review it, ask questions, and do some follow-up. And from what I understand, in discussing the electronic packets with you, that may or may not interfere, but if it interferes, then taking the time to prepare for the meeting becomes more of a crunch time. So, I've already learned not to print the stuff out that is sent to me that goes into the packets at home, unless I need to take notes on something. I like the idea of being able to go from using a hard copy from a page to another page, go check something else, write notes, et cetera. So, I mean, even on the, the eight years I spent on a school board where our meeting packets are 250 to 300 pages, although there is electronic printout, the board members are given a hard copy because they have to write a lot of notes and do a lot of cross-referencing, and that's hard to do on an electronic copy. Thank goodness ours are not that big. As far as updates go, a lot of stuff you don't have to print out, and maybe that's just the thing, what really goes into a packet that the supervisors need. The other problem we're having here is that we're trying to be more transparent and get more information out to the public about the meetings. As you notice, we read, we have the department heads read their reports, that's something that only happened in January, because I know I sat out there and wondered, well, what was the manager's report? You know, did everybody quit, or did, you know, what was the road report? Did a truck fall into Marsh Creek? We never knew, we just said all reports accepted. So, I caution us if we, I didn't talk about the money, right now, we don't have any money or new software or hardware, so I would, unfortunately, I'd still want a paper packet, so I'm a loser here when it comes to.
Jason? I have no comment. Anybody from the audience have any input? All right, I guess at this point, I'll leave it up to you, Luke. You know better than us, you were the one that put the time into it, you, as I said, I'll add my input as well as Carl's, that we could certainly cut out of the equation the redundancy of adding minutes that we're already a meeting so had. So, that would definitely help, I mean, that's at least 20 pages out of the following minutes.
Okay.
I think we should keep the online version of the starters. Have it available online for the website?
Okay.
As far as paper, Carl likes to take notes.
Well, no, but the minutes, that's a great example, the minutes can be digital, right.
Yeah, and again, the transparency is clearly there, we're online, everything is available, it would just be, you know.
Okay, so in light of the feedback from the three of you, which I appreciate, I would propose this, that what is already established is that on the Friday before a Thursday meeting, a draft agenda is distributed for the board's review. On the Monday before a Thursday meeting, the agenda is made available on our website. I would add now that the entire packet should be available on the website. However, I would like to not have that available until, say, 24 hours before the meeting, because the adding and subtracting of items.
It's a waste of staff time.
Well, we're 100% confident what the agenda will be, with the exception of late additions to the agenda. We don't always have a complete set of attachments to the agenda, such as the treasurer's report, which isn't prepared until much closer to meeting time. So, in order to stop the, you need to check it nine times a day to see what's been added or changed.
Understood.
We will post all of the electronic port of the packet the day before a meeting, and that'll stop us from having to make real-time updates to the packet materials, but it will allow people in the audience to see a digital version of what's before you. And we will exercise discretion in what we print out for the paper packet that'll be before the board. Does that sound like the?
Yeah, I think this is going to be a trial and error, therefore, I don't know if we necessarily need a motion on this while we try this.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right, I'm in agreement with going that method. You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay, right, keep, in your spare time, keep experimenting with the staff and...
Okay, we're going to move on to the contract amendment number one to Chester County Grant Program. I'll turn that over to Luke, you might as well just keep talking.
Yeah, I just like to hear my own voice. So, in your packet is a draft letter prepared by Hud Volts. Hud Volts is the Volunteer Grant Administrator for the Bonsville Mill Committee. As you know, the garden project in the Bonsville Mill is the recipient of both county and state grants. The gist of this letter is that it is a director, its direction to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to consolidate materials in one round into the other round. And while the details are less than clear to me, I trust that the grant administrator has an important cash flow or timeline rationale for recommending that these two grant rounds be consolidated, and I would request the board authorize the chairman to execute the letter in your packet.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll move that we consolidate the two grants into one package for the Bonsville Mill Park Improvements.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, proposal to change the parking mailbox and stormwater management, I'm going to turn this one over to Don Sample, he's in the audience today for Phase 3, and he's with his attorney, Brian Nagel, regarding Phase 3 for Mapleview.
Thank you, Mr. Scribner. I'm also joined by our civil engineer, Craig Knoll. So, the history of this request dates back several years to the beginning of our project at Mapleview and our interactions with our neighbors to the north at Timberlake, and their request that we improve our stormwater management facilities to reduce runoff from our site that moves northward toward their property. The, and as we've been working through the project, we've interfaced with your consultants at Penone, as well as the inspectors with the Conservation District to entertain several revisions to our stormwater management facilities. But this particular revision that we're proposing this morning is a little more substantial in that it requires what the district and DEP refer to as a minor amendment to the stormwater management approvals. Luke, can you put our exhibit on the screen?
Now, would you say your exhibit, the one you distributed last Friday after our meeting?
No, it was transmitted to you yesterday from Nave Knoll.
Okay, so what's in the digital packet? This is an apt illustration of the difficulty with moving target in packet materials, but so it is definitely not that one.
That's the...
No, this was what's accompanied your letter in October.
I understand.
Got it, okay. Yeah, let me get that loaded up.
Luke, is, yeah, I was going to ask if that's working.
Sorry.
If you wanted, we could probably put it on the desk.
If there is a printed copy, we can certainly protect it in that fashion. That would be faster than me checking my email and uploading. We do. Okay. Do you have the hard one? Yeah. So, on the eastern side of our project, our entrance to Guthrie'sville Road, if you entered the site at that location, immediately on your left. Thank you.
And if you put on the supervisor's screens...
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah, great. And Luke, from your chair, can you Zoom? Thank you very much. That's good.
So this is the area that we're focusing on. The original approved plan showed a 21-space parking lot there, and beneath that parking lot was an underground stormwater management facility comprised of high-density plastic hollow tanks. They had a particular volume of water that they could absorb, and that is an infiltration facility, meaning the water, stormwater flows into that device during a rain event and then slowly seeps underground through infiltration. The, but it's limited in being, it is underground, and it is a contained space. So what we proposed to the Conservation District and to your engineers at Penone was replacement of that facility with a more conventional surface basin that would also be an infiltration bed. So, again, it would be constructed and planted with water-absorbing plants and have an opportunity to absorb a greater volume of water because of a increased volume of the basin itself. The, as we discussed this with the Conservation District, they made it clear this rises to the level of a minor amendment, required us to make a formal application to them and process it for their consideration. However, if they approved it, it would become immediately effective without consideration by your body. So they have not approved it, they've held it, it is pending, because this also impacts our parking and our mailbox configuration. So, we came back to the township several months ago and shared the insights from the Conservation District, and then sought approval from the township manager to proceed, at which time he brought in the consultants and your solicitor, and sought their input, and thought it was best to come before this body and make a presentation for a revision to our original development plan approval. At this time, I'd like to introduce Craig Knoll, who's going to address the stormwater management volumes, but quickly, I do want to just touch on the postal issue, because the original plan approval... But quickly, I do want to just touch on the postal issue, because the original plan approvals contemplated three sets of mailbox facilities for the project. It is a three-phase construction project. Our first phase is in this area, on the western side of the project, and the original intended mailbox location is here at the north end of Sugar Maple Square. Similarly, Phase Two, this area, and the original intended mailbox location, this area at the north end of Paper Park. Every time I get to a final development plan approval, one of the first people I meet with is the local postmaster. So, back in the summer of '18, I met with the Downingtown postmaster to discuss mailbox facilities, and his concern was during construction of these houses, there are substantial subcontractor and material delivery traffic. And particular concern for him was concrete deliveries and roof truss deliveries that involve cranes and often block the roadway. And he was concerned that his postal carriers during construction of housing, when the community is partially occupied, could create obstacles and delay their ability to complete their route. He requested that Glory Maple Lane, here at the southern end, and here at the southern end in Phase Two. The Phase Three mailbox location was intended to be at the parking lot facility that was located here. So, at the request of Mr. Scribner and input from your solicitor, I revisited the issue with the new postmaster at Downingtown, Joe Williams, a fine gentleman, and he was very cooperative. What he asked us to do, in light of these various changes, was as we've completed Phase One construction, he'd be perfectly comfortable with us, now that the equipment's out of the way, to relocate the mailbox to the original intended location. He requests that we coordinate this with his carrier closely, so that we can do it in a single day. So that I will first prep the concrete pad, have my contractor at the ready, contact him, and in a single day, his carrier will come out, open the box, remove all the mail from each of the cluster facilities, we'll relocate it, fasten it at the new concrete pad, and they'll reload the box with any of the pending mail. And repeat that process in Phase Two, when the Phase Two construction is done. So, it seems like an orderly process to relocate the mailboxes. Now, the Phase Three mailbox really depends upon the decision you might make this morning, or we hope that you'll make this morning, and that is, we are proposing the elimination of these 21 spaces, but we're also proposing the creation of 11 new spaces here on Glory Maple. Now, the original intent of this, the driving factor, is reduction in impervious surface and improvement in stormwater management. It's not about mailboxes, but that's an important role, and it's not about parking, but that's still an important factor. The reduction of impervious that we gain by reducing, by eliminating a parking lot and adding parallels is an 8,000-square-foot reduction in impervious surface. It's meaningful, and it provides real benefit to our neighbors to the north. So, now I'd like to call on Greg and let him address some of the quantitative issues around stormwater.
If I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but where would the Phase Three mailbox facility be? I don't think you covered that, maybe I missed it.
Well, I don't have a decision yet from you with respect to the parking, but if you approve the parking parallel on Glory Maple, we'll locate it right here in this highlighted spot. So, it'll be off-street, it'll be central to the Phase Three residents, and there is convenient parking and pedestrian access, also close to a crosswalk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before you leave, my, just real quick, my one thought is, is there a way to designate one of those or two of those spots for mail pickup only? Meaning...
Certainly.
I'm concerned with people coming in and saying, "I can never get my mail because there's always cars parked in the parallel parking." If we were to put a sign at one or two of those spots, I'm just thinking out loud, it might alleviate a little bit of that, you know, parking in the middle of the street running across getting my mail.
That's a great suggestion. We could stripe and sign two or three of them for that purpose. In 154 home community, I wouldn't hesitate to stripe and mark three of them.
I have a question for you. I don't remember us granting you approval to put parallel parking on a deep street. Would you be taking care of that road? My understanding is, parallel parking is one of the reasons for that parking lot.
I'm sorry, I got to do my usual interjection at this point. I'm sure that there are individuals who are going to be watching this video from home, and they will hear nothing of your comment because you're not near a microphone. While we can hear you, the people who might be watching this, and I will say to, I did ask that the developer and the property management company provide notice to those homeowners who have purchased in Mapleview, and so they're aware a meeting is happening, and they may be watching this on YouTube, and they can't hear you. So, if you're recognized by the chair, I'd ask that you speak into a microphone.
Look, I guess my question, my statement should be...
Mike, come on up to the mic.
Good morning. We talked about this last night, and there are planning issues associated with these changes that perhaps should have been discussed with the Planning Commission, so that they could provide input to these revisions. And the point that Mike Wagner just brought up, the parallel parking on the Through Road, which will be dedicated to the township, should be considered by the township's roadmaster. It should be considered by the Planning Commission from a planning standpoint. So, I just bring that into the conversation here.
Thank you. And, Mr. Wagner, we, we're not suggesting that this was previously approved. We're here for consideration of that parking. Yeah.
My question was, before my statement was, I don't remember us giving you approval to do the man built, parallel parking on the Through Road.
You did not.
Would you be taking care of it?
Right, you did not.
I have a question before you move on also. In Phase One and Two, you mentioned there is a parallel, overflow parallel parking. Could you point that out to me on your plan? Where they are?
There are parallel parking spaces in front of the building, lots 23 through 29, lots 30 through 36, and then again on Paper Park Square in front of 71 through 77 and 78 through 84. 27 spaces.
What I'm going to do is, because I see a lot of hands going up in the audience, what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow you to finish your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll allow the audience to step in, and then you can have your rebuttal time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so if you want to bring up, Mr. Knoll, go ahead, and we'll, and I'll open it back up to the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Scribner. Bring up the second plan. Let's see here. There we go. As Mr. Sample said, I'm Greg Knoll with Nave Knoll. We've been the engineers on this project for about a decade. So, the plan I presented for you is, let's get orientating again. Here is Guthrie'sville Road, here is the entrance drive Glory Maple. So, what we ended up looking at was the possibility of going from a subsurface basin to a surface basin, and with that, what are the advantages and benefits that we gain from a stormwater perspective? And so, by making those changes, we can reduce, as Mr. Sample said, about 8,000 square feet of impervious coverage. In doing that, we can reduce the outflow, on average, from the basin by about 30 to 35 percent. So, we're clearly getting a reduction in the outflow that comes from the basin. At the same time, because just the way the grading works, I can get an extra 1.5 feet of storage above and beyond the normal storage amount. So, if we have an unusual rain event beyond what would be the normal standard, I even have more storage. We didn't calculate it, but it's extra storage there. So, in the end, we get a reduction in impervious, we get expanded coverage, and we get a reduction in the outflow, all which we see as a benefit, obviously, for many reasons, stormwater being such a sensitive topic for East Brandywine Township. I'm over in Wallace, we have the same thing over in Wallace. So, all those changes play into the count. It also adds, it's a subtle thing, but obviously, we're adding a lot more landscaping, because areas that weren't landscaped before, because of the impervious, we now added to it. I didn't do counts on the numerical benefits of trees, but within the Conservation District system, there is clearly numerical benefits along the way. So, we see a big change. The other thing is practically speaking, from a maintenance perspective, it's always easier to maintain something you can see on a daily basis versus something that is underground. So, we get a much better sense of long-term how well we're doing with all these changes. So, those are the benefits. As Mr. Sample said, we took the time to go through the Conservation District. There's a two-step process. One is with the township and your engineer, Penone, and also at the same time, the Conservation District. We went ahead and took care of those steps on the Conservation District side. They have indicated to us at this point, they have no other suggestions, they're very pleased candidly. Anytime we're getting the surface switch and we're adding trees and reducing impervious, that fits, obviously, with both the local county and state-level changes. So, they're sitting there, we can, we don't want to move forward with that, because if we do, it would be complicated, as Mr. Sample said, with those things. So, those are the benefits there on the stormwater side, which we think are really significant, candidly dramatic. The other thing that I wanted to point out is going back and looking at the parking, the original approval, I'm sorry, the original approval had 483 spaces. Along the way, we added the alley parking spaces, which upped that by another 27. There were 21 spaces proposed in that remote parking area. We're looking to remove the 21 and replace it with 11 on-street parking spaces, as seen here in the lighter gray, right along that area in there. At the same time, so that gets us up to 500 spaces from the original 483. That puts us at a ratio of 3.25 spaces per unit, and the ordinance is 2.25, excuse me. So, we increase it by one whole space per unit. On top of all that, if everybody goes out there, you'll see in the alleys, and I won't pull up the plan again, but in the alleys, every unit but one that's built or being built right now has two garages, not one. So, that's an additional 41 parking spaces that have been added, without increasing impervious coverage. And so, therefore, the real number is at 541 right now, and there's still another 14 units that haven't been started, so I don't know, but if the trend is there, it's 41 out of 42. So, you're projecting at least 50 additional spaces that are now out there. So, that gets our parking count to 3.5. It's 3.5 at 41, and you add another 10 to 14, and you can see where we're at. This particular development is dramatically over the number of parking spaces required by the ordinance. And I go by here, because I, like I said, I live right by here, and I'm back and forth almost every day, so I'll drive in there and check the neighborhood. And I'm sorry.
And I just want to make the point for the gentlemen who are appearing on behalf of the Planning Commission, that if for any reason, roadmaster input or planning commission input, you advise us not to install these spaces on the public road, we're okay with that. We are substantially overparked. Without these, we already exceed the requirement by 45 percent. So, we're okay. These were illustrated at the request of the township manager and one of the supervisors during a meeting that was conducted last week, when I shared with them the input from the postmaster. So, this is purely an item for discussion, but if you prefer that we not construct them, Matt, that's okay with us. It's perfectly fine. Thank you.
How would you access the mailboxes then, if there's no parking?
So, the one thought I had to that, adding to it, is maybe to have a pull-off, as you were alluding to earlier, where we simply designate two to three spaces that what everybody agrees upon, or just the pull-off area for the mailboxes. And otherwise, they're not designated as parking spaces, they're considered temporary to access the mailbox. We could certainly do that as an option.
Is that the area we're putting it in?
We talk about where that's most appropriate along that area there, yes.
I'm going to switch the exhibit, and I want to just share with you the postmaster's input.
Before you do, Mr. Sample, put that back for one second. I just want to, because Derek's here, and Matt's there, and I'm here, and all three of us have probably plowed for the total of 25 years. The biggest concern that I have, that I see, just with the parallel parking, is as the snowplow comes around that bend, you're either pushing the snow in front of all those parallel parking lots, blocking them in, or you're going to upset 106 through 111 by pushing the snow into their walkway and apron for their driveway. So, just, this was a perfect opportunity to point that out. That's the only thing that concerns me, is wintertime. Now, how do you alleviate that? No storm, no snowstorm parking possibly in those spots? I don't know, but I just wanted to point that out, and I'm sure Matt and Derek would both agree that that's going to be a problem with pushing snow.
That, and one of my other concerns is, it's a safety concern, is that having the parallel parking on the inside of a curve like that, and I believe a comment from Nate Klein from Penone was same as my comment, is that your sight distance is very limited when you're pulling out of a parking spot like that on an inside curve. You would not be able to see, especially if there's a vehicle parked behind you, you would not be able to see a vehicle coming down the roadway, Glory Maple.
Okay, continue, sorry.
Thank you. I want to address the question of if we do not build that additional 11 spaces of parking, where does the Phase Three mailbox go? And the postmaster, his preference, and I think you'll be comfortable with this, is that we locate both the Phase Two and Phase Three mailboxes at the north end of Paper Park Square. There's ample room in these large rectangular areas for people to pause, get their mail, and leave the alley. So, if we put 75 or 80 cluster boxes in that location, there's plenty of room for all of those residents in Phases Two and Three to access their mail. So, we can work this out either way, with or without those 11 spaces.
Understood. Are you guys good with the audience participation now?
Brian, did you want to address anything?
Nope.
Okay, yes, we are.
Okay, and again, audience participation, if you please come up to the microphone, state your name, just for the record, so that we, obviously, we are online right now.
With regard to the parking, the advantage of the 21-space parking lot was to provide auxiliary parking for the community as a whole. You have a lot of the parking locked up into the individual lots. You're using garages and driveways primarily to satisfy those numbers. If people are having events, graduation parties and whatnot, they need to have access to supplemental parking that serves the community as a whole. And while your counts relative to the ordinance line up, the concern is, where is the flexibility of that extra parking? So, that's my question, and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kelsey. I'm a resident in the first phase, and I specifically don't have a one-car, I have a two-car garage, and we are able to fit our cars, but I know a lot of residents with the one-car garages have complaints that their cars don't fit in the one-car garages, so their driveways are already filled. And there's also a no-parking sign on the alleys, you're not actually supposed to park there, and the people that have been parking there illegally have had to park in the grass because the street's not wide enough for you to park on the street and then a car to go down. And I'm concerned that if they get rid of the additional overflow parking, you've got Guthrie'sville and 322, and Glory Maple's connecting them both. And we've already had people try and cut through, the road's not finished, it's gravel, and people have already been cutting through, speeding, so if you have cars, that's technically the only street you're allowed to park on at the moment. And if you have traffic coming through to connect to avoid the light situations, then you have a safety concern of cars side-swiping, cars that are parked on the street. So, you can't park on the alleys, safety concerns, and I don't actually think that there's enough parking, and that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Sandy, Missouri, East Brandywine Township. Back in the day when I was on the Planning Commission, we had an ordinance that probably still could be in place, requiring native plants. A certain percentage of native plants go into developments. I'm not going to question whether this is still in advance, but the idea of the planting your trees and so forth, I would highly request that these be native plants. I can provide them with a list of native plants that will certainly absorb more water than the typical plants that go into developments nowadays. So, if a question comes up, you know where to find them.
Will Brock, sorry. Well, we do have an issue with the stormwater, so this is a good idea. We get flooded out all the time down at the bottom of the block. I do worry about the parking as well. Everyone's biggest concern, there's not many Maple residents here right now. Anytime we do have any event ever, there's nowhere for our guests to park at all. So they are very worried about that. They want to make sure we're represented. I do like the idea of the street parking here. I know you said you had an issue with the curvature. So what about on the front end of Glory Maple here? It's on a hill, and you can see there's no, nothing blocking your line of sight, so you'd probably do 20 spots down that side, just the same as you're going to do 11 over here. And you wouldn't be blocking any people pulling in or out of their driveway, there's no mailboxes, so I'd like you guys to look at that. Also with the mailboxes, we already have them set here, so I'm curious why you would come down here. So down at the bottom of the block is usually where all the kids are hanging out and playing. We have 100 little kids in our neighborhood. We already have a lot of traffic on Glory Maple, so now you're bringing all this traffic down there for the children. That's just my biggest concern. And also, you would save money by just leaving the mailboxes where they're at, and I don't think anyone in the community has an issue where they are. So that's just another thing to look at. And I believe that is all I have for you guys. Just something to add.
It seems to me like there, you know, we could come up with some type of a hybrid plan here, where we're adding some spots instead of taking them away, but we're also keeping stormwater management, and I think that would benefit everybody.
I think there's definitely a middle ground somewhere.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that this entire discussion points out that this requires more planning consideration. And I said to the Planning Commission last night that this should go before the Planning Commission for review, so they can make a recommendation. I met with Mr. Sample and Mr. Nagel some time ago to talk about this, and I told them that, you know, I'm not in the business of requiring a process just for the sake of requiring a process. But I do think it needs to go to the Planning Commission, and there has to be some formality to it, because this is not, I don't know what the definition of a field change is, this is not a field change. So, something has to be recorded in the public records that the board approved this change. So at the very least, it needs to go to the, they have to file some kind of application with a plan of what they propose that could be amended in the normal process, and then the board would decide whether it approved or not.
Yeah, and I would agree, and I would also state as earlier, I think a hybrid would be perfect for this situation, because clearly we want the stormwater and clearly we need some parking. And I don't want to put you guys on the spot right now to come out with an idea of what would be that solution, but I would think that there would be something that we could put our heads together between the Planning Commission, the developer, and the Board of Supervisors, and certainly rectify this issue, including the audience participation today.
I have a real quick question, gentlemen. Is this, the mailbox thing, is that something that we can get our everyone to approve or anything? My entire community is ready to rally real quickly and say, hey, we don't want to move forward. I'm sorry, I was just asking where the current mailboxes are. I'm pretty confident that everyone in my community would agree to leave them. Is that something I can get them to rally behind?
Problem with that is that's going to be a dedicated public road. It's a great deal of danger. Cars can't park on that road to go get their mail.
Hearing that, it has me concerned, because the one concern that we've had from the PD side from day one is the amount of traffic that that road is going to have, the speeding. We have already concerns. My opinion is those mailboxes should not be on that main thoroughfare. And I guess the question, you actually brought up a good question. The other end of the development, coming in off of 322, is there, is there an area that you could relocate that overflow parking lot with the mailboxes and put it in the other end of the development?
Like on this side right here?
Yeah, where you were just pointing.
Yeah, so you do parking here, and then mailboxes on this side as well. I just know everyone's going to be worried about the kids. We have a lot of children, that's where they play every day after school, you know, we have 50 kids running out, 20 kids running around every time. So now you're inviting all these, you know, all these cars that comes, you know, and everyone does speed, so we're looking, we're excited to get those speed humps in on the Glory Maple as well.
But the people that'll be back there are your own residents, so.
Correct.
Whereas up on a public road, it's people cutting through.
Right. Well, right now, we don't have really anyone cutting through because the road's not done, and we still have people speeding in our own residence. So we're trying to do our best to yell at our own residents, but, you know, we can only do so much.
So, Don, right now, the proposal for the changeover of the mailboxes was going to go from where I'm looking at it, from south to north, and that was on the, yes. So, the proposal, if you could point out the two areas where the new proposed spots were up on the north end of that photo, yes, one and two, are those parking lots right now, or?
No, they are not.
Okay, because Applecross, if you drive up through Sills Lane and Applecross off of Reeseville Road, they have a parking stretch of, I'll call it 12 spots, and the mailbox cluster is on the, is on the reverse, you know, on the, on the north end of that. So you can pull into any of those 12 spots, grab your mail and go. That's why, what exactly is that, is that area there? Is it just, it's just?
It's a courtyard area. Well, south of the mailbox in here is all turf.
Right.
And plantings in both squares.
Okay.
But the square itself is a paved surface.
That's where everyone is parking right now. So I live in the back corner. I'm sorry, guys. I live right here.
Yep.
And any other one who has guests or anything, they're all parking here and they're parking here.
And that was, that was brought up, the first time this development was brought up. There was no overflow parking, and that was the solution, to put that at the end.
But I would just ask, can we extend it a little bit, especially on my side? If you have a car here parking there, it just blocks my driveway. If they extended that two feet, you know, when they were planning it, you could easily fit six, eight cars there parked straight. So you can fit four or five here, but then if you put the other two cars there, you're blocking my driveway on that corner. I don't think anyone would have any issues putting parking spots there, as long as they're, you know, Matt put lines there. And again, they're not blocking my driveway and Ben's driveway on the other end. Same with down there. Thank you.
Mr. Scricker, are we done with public comment?
Yeah, one more, yep.
Okay.
So, this was initially brought to our attention during our first HOA meeting, and not this gentleman, but another gentleman from the development team came in and basically stated it was fact that the parking lot was being removed and houses were being added. So if we're considering removing the additional parking for overflow storm drainage, how can we ensure that later on it's not removed to add additional housing?
Well, we'll have it.
It's not possible?
We'll have what's called NAS Bill Plan, and that is what we are, we are, and the builder, and the developer, and land developer, and everybody is to stick by, no offense or butts. And that's part of this process.
Okay.
And if I may jump in on what may have been part of, I was only present for the setup of your recent HOA meeting, I did not stick around for the meeting, but I have suspicion that there's a bit of a miscommunication about the lot that's going away and that the new unit's being proposed. The developer hasn't today proposed adding any new units to the development. Phase 1 does include a surface parking lot that will eventually be turned into units, but that's not part of today's proposal. Okay.
And what Luke's describing is where lots 147 and 150 exist on the south side of the community is presently a visitor parking facility for Ryan Homes Sales Model in Lot 154. And that will be removed, and there will be houses there, but they don't constitute any additional housing added to the plan.
That's already something that's been addressed, yep. Okay, so finish your presentation and then get to the book from there.
Okay. So, we do have some exigent circumstances here with respect to the sequence of your decision-making, and that is, we are nearing construction completion of Phase 3. And at this point in time, we are, we are ready to set our string line and pour curb prior to doing our stone base. So I do need a decision with respect to this stormwater management facility this morning. With respect to parking, okay, or additional parking, I'm open to having additional meetings with the Planning Commission and discussing potential parking alternatives for overflow parking. I would, I would appreciate a decision on these 11 spaces because I can set my curb now, but it's not an absolute necessity because we are, we far exceed the required parking. But with, but this stormwater facility, if I don't have that decision, then I should probably just proceed and build the underground facility and not do, and do the original 21 spaces, and just call it a day. But I would, I would really, we've invested a great deal of time, both with Township Professionals Consultants, Township Staff, and our community neighbors to the north, and the Conservation District in our efforts to improve overall stormwater. So that is, that is the essence of our request this morning, is a decision with respect to that facility.
I can only speak for myself, if the proverbial gun was held to my head and said, what do I do? I would say we have to stick to the original plan today. If you, if time is of the essence and you tell me there's no offense or buts, I need an answer today, that's my take. I'll leave it up to you guys to say, but again, I would hope that there would be some grace period here if there was to be a happy medium hybrid here, but I'll ask you guys. Don, can I speak to that?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak to that, please?
Absolutely.
Good morning, Brian Nagel, counsel for the applicant. I think, I think what Don was saying essentially is that the developer is okay with the hybrid approach, and that in any case, the parking lot needs to be removed, the additional stormwater management needs to be added, and that the, if there's a concern, Roadmaster seems like you have a concern about the parallel spaces there. It sounds like the developer is open to finding other spaces, other places to put spaces, and it sounds like from what this gentleman was saying and from what you were saying, the other areas where spaces could be added would actually be a lot better than spaces down at the corner lot. Nobody's going to park down there and walk up to these areas if they're having events, if they're going to get mail. It's just, we all know, that's not going to happen. So what I would request and suggest is that we agree that we will take a hybrid approach, that you allow my client to proceed with the installation of the roadway, that at this point, we basically say, we're not going to have 11 spaces on the inside arc of a curve. I know from doing this for over 20 years, that's not a great idea. I think engineers would sign off on it, but they would be hesitant, so I don't think that's, I think we can let that go. I think we all agree that's not a great idea. And my client can continue with the approved development, they're not required to have the spaces. They're well over the ordinance requirements for parking spaces. So, we agree to the hybrid approach, we will go back to the Planning Commission, we'll discuss how we're going to implement that into the plan. That will then come back to this board for final approval, and we'll have a final plan that we can then get signed and recorded as an amended land development plan. As Mr. Estey mentioned, the two of us sitting here, having done this for a long time, we don't really know what's a field change and what's not. It's kind of a gray area. So this could be a field change, it could not be a field change. It's kind of subject to the township and the developer working it out. And Judge Brobson from the Conwell's Court, who decides a lot of these cases on appeals, will often say, that's kind of a collaborative relationship. So that's how we do things. That's how my client does things, that's how I do it. I think that's generally how the board does it, and so that's what we're asking to do in this case. And I think that's a reasonable compromise, and it allows for the Planning Commission to have input as to how we're going to close it out, and we would need to do that so that we could record that plan. So that's my request this morning from the board.
Okay. I mean, I agree, if the stormwater is what we're here for mainly, and that's what the residents are concerned about, other than parking, you know, they do have some time to go back to the Planning Commission, but let's not hold up their DEP application and let's all agree that, you know, they are over the parking spaces. So even if we eliminate the 21, and I do agree with Brian, I think that curvature, I think Matt is going to agree, it's going to be a headache, it's going to be accidents, people trying to peel apart with all-incoming traffic, it's going to be, people are going to cut through. People are going to cut through your neighborhood, just so, once you get, I'm just telling you. But, yeah, so I'm just, yeah, so they will, so I think with a pair of parking, just scratch that. I think we should get rid of the 21 parking spaces, go with the more conventional, deeper basin, and then work with the Planning Commission with parking.
And one more clarification I meant to make for you, ma'am, as a homeowner there, the number of unisons communities set, that's not going to change.
Okay.
Just for clarification, if there was a misunderstanding, I think what, I think what my client was saying during the homeowners' meeting was that there's still more units that are going to be built, but those are the units that you already see on this plan. There's no units that are going to be, there's no proposal, and there's not going to be proposals, come back to the township and say, hey, we want to squeeze a few more units in here, and we got rid of this parking lot, we're going to put, that's not going to happen. So this is, this is a set number of units in this development, it's fixed what you see on the plans, and when you get through to Phase 3, I just wanted to make that clarification so it's clear.
And may I offer just one closing set of remarks, try to bring this all together. Appreciate members of the Planning Commission, as Tom knows, there was no defined process for this request, and we had spent at least 60 days inquiring with both Panoni and Mr. Estey and Mr. Revan as to how will we make this decision? And that brought us here today. There was no effort whatsoever to bypass review by Planning Commission. Our effort was just to try to bring it all together and make a good decision for the township and for our community. And I really appreciate the suggestions and participation from residents. Regarding the suggestion of parking along here, while it makes perfect sense when you look at it two-dimensionally, the grades in this area don't support it. However, we do have a terrific location here on the western side of the property that is sitting right above an existing stormwater management facility. So if you said to us today, hey, improve this stormwater management facility, don't construct those 11 spaces, I'm quite confident Mr. Newell and I can come back to the Planning Commission in the next 30 days with a great solution for the neighborhood on overflow parking.
Yeah, and I really appreciate it. As you see, it's, my constituents are my neighbors, and if they have a problem, I have a problem. I'll see them for years to come. You'll be gone tomorrow and off to the next development. So I want you guys to know, obviously, we care about what your input is. So I would say, at this point, let's try for the hybrid. I love that idea of more overflow parking up at the entrance there. If we can push this to the next Planning Commission meeting for any ideas, and obviously that gives the Planning Commission time to come up with their own ideas as well. I think that that would be the best solution to the problem.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, as far as the timing, I don't know whether Planning Commission's willing to do this, and obviously, the two people here can't say, but maybe they're willing to schedule a special meeting to take a look at this if time is important, which I'm sure it is, and then you could consider it at your meeting later this month.
Well, at this point, I think Mr. Sample was pointing out that the pinning of the road is the most important thing at this point. I think we can all agree that that's able to occur. I don't know if anybody else has any different input on that in terms of finding the solution, but I'm happy to let the, go ahead.
Looking at the plan, I don't see a whole lot of flexibility with regard to adjusting the parking. And again, I'll reiterate, you've satisfied the ordinance requirements for parking, but a lot of that is locked into the individual lots. And the advantage of that 21-space parking lot was to provide the flexibility of supplemental parking for the community. And I understand the need for stormwater control, and we agree that that is an issue that should be focused on, but the parking plays such a key role, I feel like this is being rushed. From the discussions today, it sounds like the parallel parking along that curve is out, so the question is, can you pin the roads, possibly have a special Planning Commission meeting, and have the board consider this plan at their Thursday meeting later this month?
I'm not sure, are you?
being rushed. From the discussions today, it sounds like the parallel parking along that curve is out. So the question is, can you pin the roads, possibly have a special planning commission meeting, and have the, the board consider this plan at, at their Thursday meeting later this month?
I'm not sure, are you asking me to consider the parallel parking later this month?
No, I, I, well, from what I can see, that's your decision, but it sounds like the parallel parking is going to come off, come off the, because of the curve issue and, and other things.
Right, right.
So that being the case, can you pin the road, knowing that that parallel parking's not going to be there, and then come to the, the board's meeting later this month for, for their decision on this?
What, what we were suggesting, sir, is that we'll pin the road and move forward with, with two things, the pinning of the road, elimination of that parking lot so we can have the additional stormwater. Then we would come to a planning commission meeting and review where we're going to put additional overflow parking.
Right.
As Mr. Sample said, there's adequate areas to do that. We would then get the planning commission's input on that piece, then come back to the board, and the board would approve and ultimately sign that final plan, which then get recorded as an amended land development.
I, I understand, I understand that presentation. I think it should be looked at holistically, and the flexibility in the parking should be considered relative to the importance of stormwater control. And a decision should be made together, you know, considering all those issues at once. So, you know, is it possible you could schedule the pinning of the road and then get your decision later in the month?
All right, look at that, we-
I have a question.
When we all bought into this, everyone was worried about the parking, and they showed us this plan, and they assured us of this extra overflow lot. So you guys just taking this out because we have an issue with water, it's very defeating, right? I under, I know most of our people are going to be very upset, and putting a parking lot up here versus up there is not the same thing. This is high up on a hill, you know, you're going to have to walk all the way down this, you know, long, it just doesn't seem-
No, and I would agree with you, as I said, that's why I was suggesting a hybrid. I would be content, and I'm just saying this, and we'll, we'll move this on to the next agenda, only because I don't think we're going to have a solution today.
Right.
But my ideal situation would be parking at both ends, a little bit, a little bit, and continue to keep your, your, your stormwater management at both ends as well, and perhaps that solves a problem, I don't know, I'm not the engineer here. But again, this is, nothing's getting resolved today, we understand that, and obviously, you guys will have input at the next meeting, as well as the next planning commission meeting. I would highly recommend that you guys go there. And if anybody else had ideas, hey, this is what we make our decisions off of, your input. Thank you, guys.
I'd like, my comment is, and, is that the stormwater is a great, a great concern, but so is parking. So if we're going to do that, if we're going to move forward and allow the road construction to go as originally designed, and, uh, uh, change the twenty-one parking spaces, can we, uh, uh, require that at least twenty new parking spaces or so, or a specific number and not so that we end up with the same parking spaces that are already approved?
Yeah, that's what my concern was, if we, or not my concern, but my hybrid approach was shorten, make a small-
Right, but I want a number attached to it, not, not a maybe.
And I would say, I, I would leave that in the planning commission's hands.
That's fine, the question is, where are those twenty spaces going to go?
Well, but, well, if it was ten and ten, they got to figure that out.
Yeah. You feel okay with that?
Please bear in mind that at the time of final plan approval, not planning commission approval, at planning commission approval, there were four hundred and eighty-three spaces. At final plan approval, in a very similar discussion about getting more parking for visitors proximate to the houses, we added twenty-seven spaces on these two alleys. Twenty-seven.
Yeah, I know what you're going to say, they, they're blocked off with signs right now, right?
Yeah, there's enough parking signs, and you can't park on that street without being, your car's living on the street without another car being in the path, so half the parking lot.
And, and that, Chief just made a very, very good point also. I think that, um, uh, the fire department has to be included in this, in this discussion as well. But, um, again, you know, not to beat a dead horse here, but I think we're good. We, we understand that there's a need for both stormwater, we understand there's a need for parking, and, um, we have a little bit of time to, to play with this and change it around. Obviously, it's more on your end for what is physically possible, but we're willing to work with you guys as, as well as obviously, the planning commission and, and the residents.
I'll make a motion that we approve Maple View's Phase Three Stormwater Management Facility to eliminate the twenty-one parking spaces for a conventional subsurface basin, as well as approve the mailbox locations per the postmaster's request and as discussed by the developer for Phases One and Two to be relocated back to Two and Three, depending on the, the post office. To remove the parallel parking spaces along the curved main road, but to compensate for a small off, small three spaces for the mailbox location there. And for the, um, and with the, uh, understanding that you'll be back before the planning commission to allow the residents to have some input, as well as the planning commission for some, try to find some additional parking and, and, you know, for the residents.
Mr. Wagner, real quick.
Uh, Mike Wagner, uh, one quick question, before you make this resolution and you give the approval, they haven't gone through any planning process, they've just given you an idea, and now you're giving that carte blanche to say, "You don't have to do your stormwater there, you don't have to do your parking there." And that's what I'm hearing. Now, our discussion last night with Tom was, hey, you got to come to the planning commission, get some feedback, and then our feedback, well, our recommendations will then go to the supervisors, and if they want to amend the plan, then you have to go through the process.
But they've been through the process. Mike, they've been through the process.
I, I appreciate Mr. Winter's motion, but the difficulty is, you're, you're approving something in a vacuum, you don't know where the spaces are going to go, you don't know-
But they-
Well, I didn't hear a second, and I'm sorry, I just didn't recognize.
At the end of the day, I mean, at the end of the day, they meet the parking requirements at final approval, so I don't think that, they're trying to, they don't have to be here today. They're doing this as a courtesy, you know, before us, they could-
Right now, they're locked into their final land development goals, they have to build a parking lot over a subterranean stormwater management basin, period. They want to do that, go right ahead, but if you want to make a change to your plan, an official plan, then you need to come and go through the process. This is what Tom has been trying to explain, there's a process that we go through for land development, and this is a change, so this isn't a field change. I do field change myself, very simple. This is not a simple field change, we can change the plan, change the final plan that was recorded in the township. So if they want to make changes to it, they have to go through the process. So that process is coming to the planning commission, saying, "Hey, this is our idea, this is what we want to do." Yes, we're a recommendation body, our recommendation goes a long way. And from that, then you report supervisors, take our information, and then you make a judgment of whether or not their, their request is appropriate. We have concerns from some residents that the way that development is developed now isn't adequate enough for them to be able to renovate around their, their, their homes. And if we minimize more parking, what are we going to do to the residents when they have people who want to come over? We've been through this, what's that, sorry, should I open the mic?
I under, I'm like, I understand what you're saying, but, but you did review it. The planning commission did review this, and as is right now, if there's parking issues, that was already approved. You know, our Sado's three fifty twenty-two is a plan amendment, and that's to be determined by the board. Not the, you don't have to start the process like a preliminary plan again, we're, we're here for us. I don't think this is major, I mean, the road's not changing, it's, we're talking about adding more, more-
All right, so, so- If I could just, if I could just interject on what, what both gentlemen have said. Number one, I think Mr. Sample pointed out that from the time that the planning commission approved this plan, they've already added twenty-seven spaces, which is more, let me finish, sir, I didn't interrupt you, let me finish, please. They've already added twenty-seven spaces from what was on the plan that you recommended, which is more than the amount of spaces that's in the lot that's being removed. You also said that stormwater management is being eliminated, and that's not true at all. Actually, stormwater management is being increased. And I don't, I don't disagree, I'm, I'm agreeing that we get, we go to the planning commission, and the planning commission make a recommendation, ultimately, the final amended plan is approved and signed and recorded. And that's fine, that's, that's a reasonable process. All I'm saying is that there's, there's absolutely nothing wrong, and nothing's going to change from Mr. Winter's motion, that we be permitted to build the road that's there on the plan and put in the additional stormwater management, and then we'll come back and find appropriate places with review of the planning commission and the residents, where to put additional parking, which will now be over and above the six additional spaces we already have from what's on the approved plan. So my position is, we're permitted to do this anyway. The parking's not required, and we could move forward, but we're trying to be cooperative and collaborative, as I said, and come through, be open with the township and its residents, and get these things signed off on, and we will do that. But there's absolutely no reason to hold up the construction of the road and the additional stormwater management. And I think the motion is reasonable, and obviously, Mr. Estey, with respect to your point, it will be, ultimately be ratified by, in the amended plan. So I think it's a reasonable procedure. The, uh, only, you know, again, I, I was kind of of the mindset, I know Supervisor Winter started a motion, I was kind of of the mindset of holding it for today, you know, and again, if, if a motion was mandated today, which I don't believe it is, but if it were, I would say basing the motion that, that Supervisor Winter's made with an inclusion of twenty spots wherever they may be, uh, at, at some period of time, and, and to be determined by planning commission and brought forward to the, to the supervisors. I know you had some input, you got cut off a little bit, but, um, just please come up again if you-
I'm only debating the procedural part of it. The additional parking, the additional stormwater management, it's, it's a development issue, it's a, it's a money issue for them. What's it going to cost me to build underground storage? It's about the procedure. They've come in here and they're trying to change and approve plan. All I'm asking is you go through the process. And our conversation last night with Tom was, you need to come to the planning commission, get our feedback, and then come to the supervisors and work it out with them. I don't have a problem with changing your stormwater management. Underground storage costs a lot of money, an open basin does, you can put more volume in. Removing parking to different locations out of the way, not a very good plan. This should have been something else, be a bigger base, who knows? But that's what you'll find out when you come to the planning commission. Again, it's about the procedure, it's about not getting us, the township in trouble by giving you something that we really can't give you.
All right, so, so, again, you know, this is, we're spending a lot of time on something that's really probably not going to get resolved today, but I, I, I am okay with the road going, getting pinned in without the parallel spots. That doesn't affect the current parking lot area, that doesn't affect the possible change of stormwater management, nothing changes, correct? Road gets pinned, we can still deal with the stormwater, we can still deal with the parking lot. You're talking about just the roadway at this point.
I wouldn't even be here if we were talking about the roadway, I have an approved plan to build the roadway.
Correct.
I, I came here with a proposal to approve stormwater management, and, and the additional issues of parking and mailboxes, all of which were raised during my proposal to improve stormwater management because it affected parking, okay? Well, I exceed the parking requirements substantially, so it's not a big lift. I'm, I'm seeking an approval to proceed with the Conservation District on the stormwater management plan that they've already reviewed, that increases our freeport by a foot and a half, and, and retains more water and slows the release to the north.
You have, you haven't answered the question though, Mr. Sample, of whether you're okay with the amendment to the motion to, to condition that you'll add twenty more spaces in the, in the final approval process with the planning commission and coming back to the board?
And I'm perfectly comfortable coming back to the board with a, a condition of adding additional twenty spaces.
Get better stormwater and get your spaces, no additional homes, I think that's reasonable.
Anybody have any input to that, that suggestion? Absolutely. Please, sorry.
I don't know anything about land surveying or regulations or anything, but what happens if it comes back that they're not allowed to build parking spots on the proposed land right here?
Well, that's, that's, again, at the end of the day, if it came down to it, and I'm sure they wouldn't be happy, if we had to include twenty spots and needed to lose a house or two because there was absolutely no other way, which I don't think that that's going to be the case, obviously, that's a solution that would have to happen.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a concern I have, and we have, I know Luke, I think he told us that he notified the residents, this is an approved, recorded land development plan. These folks bought their properties, whether they knew it or not, based on the approved land development plan that included this parking lot. I would caution the board that you can't change an approved, recorded land development plan without going through the proper process that the township requires. I, I sympathize with what Mr. Sample said, I think I met with him probably two months ago, you know, I, I don't know why it took so long to get to this point, and I sympathize with the urgency he has, but I think we need to look at it from the perspective of the township and, and what the process is. These folks have rights, and you can't change their rights without going through the proper process.
Yeah, and, and I said-
Tom, what's, what is the process? I have to address that, the Phase Three's not recorded yet, Mr. Estey, and that, and I, I checked the, the public offering statement, and that parking lot is not a must-be-built improvement, so there, there's no obligation to build that lot.
But you will have, but you will relocate twenty spots somewhere.
Yes, we're agreeing, we're, we're-
This was included in our closing documents, and this parking lot was on a map in our closing documents.
And, and we're in agreement to get the, we're in agreement to get the ultimate approval that Mr. Estey's talking about, that's fine, we have no objection to that.
But you're already locked in to losing those twenty-one spaces?
But we're agreeing to add twenty-one additional spaces.
If you can.
And, and moreover, don't forget, we've already added an additional twenty-seven spaces, so we're above where we were with even, with, with that lot not being there, so.
But we're told they can't be used, so, you know, again, these are things that should be developed during the process. And if, if Mr. Sample said it, he has a right to build what's been approved, if, if he has to move forward tomorrow, then he can build what's approved.
I, I, let's leave it at this, I think it's clear as a bell that the developer has his rights to do what was already approved. I also see that the residents have issues, the township, planning commission has issues, and the township supervisors have issues. My suggestion right now is to do nothing, Mr. Samples has the authority to go ahead and do what he's already approved to do, we can't stop that, but in the meantime, we know what we all want, which is additional spots and stormwater rectified. And that gives us the time to take care of that in the next couple of weeks, albeit probably at the, at the planning commission meeting next, and then it trickles down to us again. But right now, nobody's getting, in my opinion, nobody's getting short-changed anything because they get to move on, they already had that right, and you guys got your say, the planning commission had their say, and supervisors had their say. I think it's the easiest approach to look at this right now, and it keeps us out of the, the limelight with residents for taking a step that possibly wasn't necessary.
The, the problem is, we, we can't move on because we're waiting on the minor amendment approval. All we're asking is, we be permitted to proceed with that, which-
I'm sorry, what, what, what was it?
The minor amendment that Mr. Sample mentioned from DEP and the Conservation District. We're just asking that we be permitted to proceed with that, which includes the elimination of the parking lot and the additional stormwater management that's going to be added, and then the rest of it could be approved in the process that we discussed. I think the motion that was made is reasonable, we're willing to do that.
Tom, what's your thought?
It's the same as I already stated.
Okay.
The, the, the MPDS permit can just sit until the plan is amended. And again, if you need to move forward tomorrow, then I suppose build the approved plan.
All right, I have to obviously side with the solicitor on this, it would be, it would be crazy not to, he's paid to, to give our, our, our legal advice. I, I'll let you guys decide what, what your thoughts are, but I'll, I'll, I'll agree that at this point, it's probably safer to do nothing, but go ahead.
I mean, I don't, I don't personally think that, um, they're here, they, you know, they, they're requesting something, and this plan has been approved by the planning commission. You know, we just, we just talked about the parallel parking, we don't like it, it's dangerous, you know, we, we're okay with the mailboxes. The development apparently has some complaints from the residents for not adequate enough parking. They're still going to get the same amount of parking, so I don't really understand what we're going to gain from trying to have a, a planning commission review this when we've already discussed what we actually want, and we're the board, and I think that we have an obligation to, not only our residents, but also to, you know, people who are investing in our community, to not hold them up. And I, I don't personally, I know this water, this area is completely, you know, it's, it's a, oh, it's wet, and I think that to have more- a, oh, it's wet, and I think that to have more stormwater management, I'd rather see more, more, more stormwater management and people walking a little bit, you know, to their parks, to the parked cars than, than anything else. And I don't, I think that this is gonna end up being the same consensus from the Planning Commission. So I think that, I think we should, uh, you know, grant them their right to continue with their, uh, Conservation District to, for their minor amendments. I mean, our own SADO, 350.2 says that a, a plan amendment is, is up to the board to determine. It's not, there is no process that we have to go to the Planning Commission, it's, it's the Board of Supervisors' determination whether it, this triggers a whole review. I don't think it does. I, I think that it's pretty clear, they have a good presentation, I think that both residents that were here's concerns will be addressed in that motion, so what do we, they're here, the, the residents were here, and, um, I think the members from Timberlake too would be appreciative to try to, you know, have that extra capacity. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't know this developer, I, but I know from this project, from being a supervisor, that they've done everything they said they're gonna do. They went above and beyond, you know, I know Allison, the, the home north of, of the North Cudsoville Road was having problems, and they went and they helped them, helped her out by making sure that the stormwater runoff was, was, uh, situated and not caused her a negative impact, so I don't see why we should hold them up on this one, we're gonna end up getting what we approved anyway. And then we don't, you know, I don't care, it's up to them to get it to us.
Well, it's, 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 it's a fascinating and interesting conundrum here, and I agree with a lot of what Jason said, but the fact of the matter is that there is an approved plan, and it is a deviation that, that in my mind does eliminate the parking with only, with only, uh, new parking coming if it can quote-unquote be found, I'd want it to be more specific. And I have to, when you're in a conundrum like this, I have to lean towards the solicitor's direction that it should go to the Planning Commission because we need to have more input from the residents. The builder has the right to go ahead and, and build as it's already approved, that that's his decision. Or, I mean, it's, it, I hate to throw it back, back, back to the developer, but that's really what, what, what we have to do here. So either build the plan that you have, even though you've identified that you can maybe make it better, but that, that making it better has to go through, in my mind, the Planning Commission, as the solicitor said, because giving up the parking to me is, 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 is as important as additional stormwater. I mean, obviously, the stormwater plan's already been approved, the, uh, the current one, so I would, uh, I would side with, uh, putting it back to the Planning Commission.
All right, so, again, I think we know the, the solution to the problem. It, it, ultimately, we have volunteers on the Planning Commission that are doing this out of their own free time, uh, to help us and to help the residents as well. I'll second Carl's motion at this time.
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm very sorry, there, there was a motion made by Mr. Winters that did not receive a second. It sounds like none is forthcoming, but I think we should dispose with the motion that's made by Mr. Winters first.
All right. Is there a second on Mr. Winters' motion? Seeing none, we'll move on to the second motion that was made by Carl Croft, um, and, um, and, and suggested we kick this back to the Planning Commission, and the builder has right to continue to do as built plan, um, that's already approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, nay.
All right, um, thank you guys, and obviously, we're willing to work with you guys on this next leg here. Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, update award contract of the, um, purchase and plans for Bonsville Mill. Luke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, may I impose on someone at the back of the house to turn the house lights back up? Thank you. Um, in, in March, the Board of Supervisors received, um, uh, an engineer's certified, um, uh, uh, set of, um, we advertised a, well, let's just completely start at the beginning. Uh, the, the, the township had advertised the purchase of plants for Bonsville Mill through an advertised competitive bid. We received the results of those bids, and the board voted to award the contract to the apparent low bidder at a meeting in March. It has since become apparent that that contract, which called for the delivery of those plants in September of this year, is not a timeline that can be met by the, the earlier phase of, uh, uh, the Bonsville Mill construction, namely, the, the delivery of the soils and the spreading of the soils and the constructions of the hardscape and the garden area. Therefore, I am respectfully asking the board to, uh, instead reject all bids for the, uh, purchase of plants at Bonsville Mill, and that bid project, uh, that project will be again bid out for spring delivery.
Sure.
Uh, i- i- if recognized by the chair, you certainly, you certainly may.
Um, I'm, I'm, I've just got whispered in my ear, I'm the temporary chair, so you'd come up.
I, I just wanna add to what Bruce, or what Luke said, um, that the reason for the adjustment in the timeline is, uh, the requirement, uh, for a bridge repair, and that bridge is critical to, um, providing access for the stone and the soils that need to be delivered to this, to the park for the, uh, park project. So the, the timeline for that, uh, now, I think, uh, reasonable completion date is May first, which pushes the completion of the Phase Two work for acceptance of the plants beyond the planting season. So that's the reason for needing to, um, refuse the, uh, the contract.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Motion to reject...
Right, we need a motion to reject all bids for the, uh, Phase One and Phase Two Bonsville Mill improvements.
Phase Three.
Phase Three?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, it, it is the, the, exactly, so it would be, um, uh, the, the motion would be to reject all bids for the purchase of plants at Bonsville Mill, uh, Phase Three.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, we're down to new business. Okay, um, the East Brandywine Baptist Church, uh, to host fireworks display, I'll turn this over to Luke.
Yeah, so, um, uh, we've had some pre-application discussions for a proposal to allow for a display firework event in the Township, uh, Community Park. There are two sections of code that, um, uh, that, that we, we need to, to be responsive in considering this application. Uh, one are the park rules, which are enclosed in, in Chapter, uh, 182, and the other is in the firework rules, which are in Chapter 160. In both instances, they describe, uh, Board of Supervisors' approval. So before the applicant went too far down the road of developing a proposal, I wanted to ask the applicant, uh, to make a presentation to the Board of Supervisors, um, as to, to, uh, what they intend to do. I know we're joined by, by Janet Doane from the East Brandywine Baptist Church. Welcome, thank you for your patience. Uh, w- w- I would ask that the, the, the chair recognize, uh...
Absolutely, please come up and we'll figure this out.
Thank you, and my name's Brian Fuller, I'm actually with Janet from East Brandywine Baptist Church, and there, our event is going to be, what we're hoping for is, um, the East Brandywine Food Truck Festival. We would have us, um, probably somewhere between six and eight food trucks for this event, it would be on July tenth, Sunday, July tenth, um, from five PM to nine thirty. We would also like to, um, have, um, some moon bounces, dunk tank, petting zoo, um, ending the evening with these fireworks. We want to honor our East Brandywine police and firefighters, and this is a complete community event. We'd also like to host a, a five K race, uh, that evening, and, um, so we're here today to, um, find out what we need to do in terms of moving forward on the fireworks display at nine o'clock, uh, but also to find out what we need to do in terms of permits and, uh, if we can be allowed to have the park. We've highlighted on that sheet of paper that Janet put together, the areas of the park that we would like to have reserved. Allison Pavilion, Craft Pavilion, Ball Field D and Soccer Field Six, Ball Field C are B, Soccer Field Three, um, and the food trucks at the far parking lot, backing to the soccer field, and the front and part of the back parking lot for visitor parking, and then the dunk tank to be determined location. We're also requesting the opportunity to, um, enjoy the promotion, uh, with your scrolling electronic sign, if possible, signs at the park advertising the event, signage at locations the day of the event.
Pertaining to that, Luke, what, what, what is our practice been for other functions with the Township sign?
Um, yeah, we have a, we have a provision where we, we, um, will allow use of that sign for, uh, community partners. I, I, I have no concern about that. It, it is a, a very busy time of the year, and those slides get about eight seconds, so a great, once you get five or six slides up there, most people who drive by will not see them all.
Absolutely.
But yes, I'm happy to share.
Uh, does the board have any questions about the presentation?
I, I, I would, I would say what is unique about this application, because generally such presentations are made to the planning, I mean, sorry, to the Parks and Recreation Committee. What's unique about this, we get many applications to use the park, what's unique about this is the fireworks.
Okay, I was wondering why.
That, that's, that's, and we do have a precedent for fireworks in the community park. The, uh, East Brandywine Fire Company had two events where there were display fireworks in the park.
Yeah, and I would say that that would be my number one concern, that the fire department was aware, as well as the police department, and we had people on standby for that.
Right, now, did they both, I mean, is there a permit needed for fireworks?
Yes.
Okay, so, the, the, does a permit require the, uh, I guess the fire marshal or the, or the fire chief and the chief of police sign off on, or...
A- as well as the building codes official, interestingly. But among the, among the requirements in the review processes are any conditions the Board of Supervisors might attach, hence the agenda item.
If, yeah, I believe this event would fall under a large gathering, uh, under the ordinance, which is going, one or two of the things that you guys did not address here, um, having the appropriate medical personnel, whether it be from the area ambulance services or whatnot, and for these type of events, I see that you have your EBVC security team there, but this event is gonna require police officers. So that's something that the church is gonna have to pay to have, I would say, a minimum of three police officers on duty that night. Um, so, you know, do you have any idea how many peo- like, do you have a idea in your head how many people you expect to show up? Because I know when the township did it, that park was packed.
Yeah, we're anticipating somewhere between six and eight hundred. Hopefully.
Yeah, so this, this is, you know, this, this is a very large planning event that's gonna have to include a lot of stakeholders. But I just, I wanted to put that out, I didn't see that up personally.
Thank you.
So, so for a large gathering, we have a pro- we have a process in place?
Yeah.
There is. I, I, I will confess that when I first, the, the two sections of code I directed the applicant to be prepared to address was the, the fireworks section and the park rental section. I, I did not direct their attention to the, the large gathering, uh, section of the code. So, um, for that, I, for that, I, I, that is, that's, you not having an answer for that is because I did not give you advance warning that that would be asked, so my apologies.
Is there a definition as to a large gathering, i.e. a number of people?
Yes.
Okay, well then, everything looks good here, but you gotta take another step.
Sure.
And in terms of, uh, you know, our input today, it could also include, obviously, the exception of the large gathering rule.
Right, well...
Chief, chief input as well as fire input.
Right, I, 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 let me, let me suggest, uh, that this is a course of action. If there is no objection from the Board of Supervisors to conceptually the event that is, that is proposed, uh, we, with staff and, um, uh, uh, Police Department and Parks and Rec will work together to, 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 to put meat on these bones. But I didn't want the applicant to make that kind of an investment in planning, not knowing if the board did not support fireworks in the park generally.
Yeah, I, Chief, did you have something?
Did you guys talk to EBYA to see whether these fields are even available that weekend?
Well, the way this all happened is, we were, um, trying to see the logistics and the possibility of having everything on our campus.
Okay.
And, um, as a result of that meeting, the, um, I'm not sure if you were at that meeting or not, Luke, but, um, we, we had someone there with the township with one of our members, and, um, the fireworks just aren't logistically able to be done at our property. So that got us talking with someone about maybe having it at the park, so that led us to, um, that whole discussion, and it looked like that it was available at that time period, um, but we wanted to make sure before we start promotion and planning and all of the things you just brought up, that we have the green light to, to move forward.
So I would add, I see a hand going up real quick, but I, I'll, I'll get one second, I just was thinking, for the sake of today, unless otherwise stated, but by anybody else, I would think at the very least EBYA approval, police approval, fire approval, and large gathering ordinance, um, uh, adhering to that. And I saw a hand go up someplace. No? Oh, okay.
You don't know, help us.
Um, we, we originally met with the fire, um, firework company, and we had one s- person from the, um, Parks and Recs and somebody from the fire department, and they were the ones who recommended we go to the Township Park, as opposed to having it at East Brandywine, due to the limited space and fire restrictions, and we'd have to close roads, we'd have to close the road behind the church and, um, Corner Catch, so we'd have to get the state involved in that, um, so that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board?
All right, so I'm, I'm, I'm hearing from the, um, from the Board of...
I will say that I support it, they just need to continue the process of getting it, the paperwork, and unfortunately, something like this, you need the paperwork.
Sure.
To, to protect yourself.
I think your first thing to do, just get ahold of somebody from EBYA and find out if these fields are even available that day.
Right.
Yeah, Michael Mize. Mike Mize is the commissioner.
Right.
Do you want me to get his email?
I know Mike.
Let me look at his email.
It is a Sunday. That is a Sunday.
Sunday evening.
Yeah, it's Sunday evening.
Okay, so, so...
Could we just have guidance too on our next steps? We need to talk with Mike Mize, we need to talk to EBYA.
Yeah, I would, I would say...
I assume we'd talk with you, Chief, about the police.
Make a look at the, the, the large gathering ordinance, to get an idea of what is gonna be required as far as the police.
My recommendation would be to do a group email and include the following, Mike Mize, Parks and Rec, East Brandywine, uh, Youth Association, Chief, Fire, Fire Chief, and Police Chief, and Luke for regarding the large gathering ordinance. I think if a, a group email was sent to all those parties, I'll repeat that one more time, Park and Rec, Mike Mize, EBYA, Police, Fire... Park and Rec, Mike Mize, EBYA, Police, Fire, Luke Revan, and that copies everybody in the same email, and everybody can have their input, that way you're not going to have, you know, eight hundred emails, I think, and Luke can probably facilitate the starting of that email with everybody on there, so you're not searching for all those contacts, and I think that that starts a good ball roll.
And my understanding is from this conversation that besides all of these details that we need to start coordinating, the fireworks in concept would be something that would be-
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it, I heard-
No, I'm in favor of that.
And I didn't hear any objection from supervisor winners. This is something that's happened in the past with, with the fire department as well, so, you know.
Matt, you may want to weigh in on this too, like, and you would probably want to be involved in the courts to now set up one of these. Did we have an issue one year on the burn of the field?
Uh, the issue was the lack of cleaning up after the, after the event, and I do see that they have a cleanup crew schedules for-
And I, and I-
We'll all help out.
Yeah, and I wasn't cutting Matt out of the equation, because we have, as part of this process with the fireworks, the code officials are there anyway, so I mean, it's, I think we've covered all bases with, with who's, who's included on this, so, anyway, that's, that's my take, I'm, I'm, I have no problem with the fireworks, and I think that that was the biggest hurdle that you were trying to accomplish.
So large gather, large gathering ordinance and then coordinating it with all the people that you just gave me?
Correct, just because what, what happens if EBYA says we already have tournaments sold that, you know?
Yeah, that's-
It's a done deal.
My, my question was, and we wanted input from you, does it matter if we go to the C or B, those were the two fields that were recommended for fireworks?
Well, I think Park and Rec would be the ultimate decision maker on that, they're included on that, on that email chain that I was suggesting, and it might come down to B is out of the, out of the question because of something that's going on, and, and maybe that rectifies that anyway.
Right, and I had recommended those two fields, because they are ballfields that have no grass on the infield, and so there's no scorch damage that can be done to turf if that's where the mortars are set.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good? Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to Hideaway Farms escrow release, Luke, you might as well handle them both at once.
All right, so included in your packet are two letters from Township Engineer Nate Klein recommending the releases of two escrows from the Hideaway Farm Development, the Phase One and Phase Three. At this time, I respectfully ask the board to approve the escrow releases as presented by the Township Engineer.
And there was no issues with any of the residents pertaining to this?
There, there's, the review process, the, the process is, the, the developer requests the escrow review, the engineer confirms that the improvements were made per plan, and then makes a recommendation that the board release it. There is not a process by which the HOA was-
No, I understand, but I just want to make sure, because we dealt with this over the Abilacross recently, I just want to make sure that there was no input from any residents.
I have not heard any input from residents.
That's all I need.
If I may, the only issue I heard was a couple of dead trees, and I believe that's been resolved.
You guys okay?
I'm okay, I reviewed the-
Okay.
Reviewed it briefly with Nate.
So a motion would be appropriate?
I moved that we, escrow release number twenty-one and number sixteen in Hideaway Farms for Phase One and Three.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, subdivisions and zoning applications, non-ordinance resolutions for consideration. Luke, I'll turn this one over to you.
All right, included in your packet is a draft of ordinance number one of twenty-twenty-two and an associated Exhibit A. This represents amendments to the park rules that are in Chapter 182 of the Township Code. I appreciate Parks and Recreation's patience while we get this to the agenda. Their original goals were to amend the sections related to smoking and to the minimum, or the maximum number of people that could be using a field before a permit was required. Member of Parks and Recreation, David Summers, made a presentation to the board some months ago. Between Mr. Summers' presentation and the draft that's before you, two additional things have occurred. One, I recommended that all references to the dollar value of park amenity rentals be removed from the ordinance and instead incorporated into a fee schedule. That fee schedule is the next item on the agenda. The other thing that's occurred is if you take a look at Exhibit A to Ordinance One of twenty-twenty-two, there are redlined markups. Those markups are part of a discussion that occurred with Parks and Recreation just this Monday, and represent feedback from our permits administration team about how the, how, problems that come up with implementation. And so we've simplified some of the request process. A good example is, we had previously required all applicants to submit a list of roster of the league that they would like to use the field on. We've now clarified that that's only necessary when, when it is not clear whether or not that organization is township-based or not. So with those revisions, I'd respectfully ask the board to adopt Resolution One of twenty-twenty-two.
Questions from the board?
I move that we adopt Resolution- The Resolution or an ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is an Ordinance One of twenty-twenty-two.
Ordinance One of twenty-twenty-two, amending the Township Park rules, which are incorporated into Chapter 182 of the Township Code as Exhibit A.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Luke, go ahead and continue, Resolution Five.
Thank you. So as referenced in my presentation for the Ordinance One, Resolution Five includes new language that shows the, the actual value of tennis court and field rental. Resolution Five also represents a consolidation of multiple previous resolutions where the board had established fee schedules. Previously, those fee schedules existed in four distinct places. This resolution would, would compile them all in one with the intent of starting a tradition of an annual review of our fee schedule to see if it is still in line with actual costs. There is only one proposed change to the actual fee schedule, and that is substituting for small stormwater projects. Instead of a review escrow where time and material is billed for the stormwater consultant's review, we are collecting a flat fee based on the median experience of previous applications for stormwater review for simplified and engineered programs. I think the change is important for both an administrative purpose, it's vastly easier to collect a flat fee than it is to manage multiple small review escrows, and also from a customer service perspective. The median experience of stormwater review is about fifteen hundred dollars for an engineered plan. Our current ask is for an escrow as a thousand dollars, which means that an applicant will be asked at the point of application to deposit a thousand dollars and told that the unused portion will be refunded. And then later, we will ask them for an additional five hundred dollars because, because the review, it generally is more than a thousand dollars. I think this experience of giving someone two sets of sticker shock is far better if we just gave them one set of sticker shock and a more reasonable expectation of what the cost of the permit is. And with that, I'd respectfully ask that the board adopt Resolution Five of twenty-twenty-two.
Uh, no, I'll make, before I make a motion, or Jason makes a motion, have you had any response back from our engineer? Because the other, the other shoe is, we've asked our engineer now on these to give us a flat fee.
Yes, the, the owner of Cedarville, which does the review of stormwater, sent a reply to my request at seven PM yesterday, I have not reviewed it.
Okay. Well, that's a-
And I would say that that's more of a housekeeping.
I was going to say, that's a different, that's a different issue, just was checking, so I will make a motion, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Five of twenty-twenty-two, adopting a master fee schedule for various permits and application fees.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
And Luke, one last one for establishing policy for supervisor access to township records.
This last came up in, in the spring of two thousand eighteen, and at that time, I had proposed a amendment, or the, the board considered adopting a policy specifying the members of the board's relationship with the township records located in the building. I've made no revisions to that two thousand eighteen proposal, and the board has asked that that be revised, so before you, in resolution format, is my original two thousand eighteen proposal and the cover Resolution Six of twenty-twenty-two.
And what was the revisions from two thousand eighteen, is there anything in particular?
I, I've made no revisions to my draft from two thousand eighteen.
So it's just rectifying it?
Well-
Oh, it's, it's putting into a resolution of what we as supervisors have to, have to do to obtain records, because we don't maintain those records, the staff maintains those records, so if we need a record, we shouldn't interfere with the staff's control and custody and responsibility for the records, so that just outlines, outlines how we work with that.
Understood, any motion or any questions?
So I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Six of twenty-twenty-two, establishing a policy for supervisors' access to township records.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Seven of twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry, Jason, you have to either nay or-
Uh, nay.
Um, Resolution Seven of twenty-twenty-two, rescinding Resolution Three of twenty-twenty-one, which authorized return of excess condemned land and authorizing township administration to, consultants to comply with court orders dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-two, I'll turn that over to Tom.
Thank you, as the board knows, Carlino, East Brandywine, brought litigation against the township and BVA and LNR and certain other individuals, requesting that the transfer of some of the condemned land be conveyed back to LNR and John Cropper, and also approved a settlement agreement be declared void. The court held a hearing on a request for a preliminary injunction by Carlino, wherein Carlino requested that both those actions, the return of the land and the settlement agreement be declared void. That hearing was held in late January. This passed Monday on April fourth, the court entered an order essentially granting all the relief requested by Carlino, including a declaration that the return of the condemned land was void and illegal, and also that the settlement agreement is void and illegal. The last paragraph of the order requires the township to take immediate steps to unwind, rescind, or withdraw from any and all steps taken to implement the alleged settlement agreement within five days of the day this order. What I have before you this morning, which has been reviewed by Luke on behalf of the Township Administration, is proposed Resolution Seven of twenty-twenty-two. This matter was added to your agenda in accordance with Act sixty-five at the beginning of tonight, this morning's meeting. I will read the resolution. A resolution rescinding Resolution Number Three of twenty-twenty-one, which authorized return of excess condemned land and authorizing township administration and consultants to comply with court order dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Whereas at its public meeting on March fourth, twenty-twenty-one, the Board of Supervisors adopted Resolution Three of twenty-twenty-one, which authorized the return of certain condemned land to the Condemnies, LNR Partnership LP and John R. Cropper. And whereas pursuant to Resolution Three of twenty-twenty, then, twenty-twenty-one, then Township Special Counsel Rudolph Clark LLC filed with the Protonitory of the Court of Common Pleas of Chester County at number twenty-twenty-one dash zero six seven five zero dash RC, a document titled Declaration of Disposition of Land, which returned to LNR Partnership and John R. Cropper, certain land condemned by the township being part of Chester County UPI number thirty dash two dash forty-seven point one. Whereas by order dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-two, in Carlino, East Brandywine LP versus East Brandywine Township et al. at number twenty-twenty-one dash zero nine eight seven eight dash IR, the order, the Court of Common Pleas of Chester County declared that the township's purported transfer of a portion of the condemned land to LNR Partnership and John R. Cropper is and was illegal, is invalidated and void ab initio, and whereas the order also declared invalid ultra veris and void ab initio, a certain settlement agreement among, between East Brandywine Township, Brandywine Village Associates, LNR Partnership, Leonard Blair and Richard Blair, approved by the Board of Supervisors at its public meeting on December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas the order also directed the township within five days of the date of the order to take immediate steps to unwind, rescind, or withdraw from any and all steps taken to implement the settlement agreement, including advising the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation that a certain letter dated December twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one is withdrawn, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of East Brandywine Township, Chester County, Pennsylvania, as follows, one. Resolution Three of twenty-twenty-one is hereby rescinded and is of no legal effect. Two, the Township Administration, Township Solicitor, and Township Consultants are directed and authorized to do all things necessary to comply in all respects with the order, including but not limited to, A, preparation filing of all documentation necessary to nullify the return of condemned land to LNR Partnership and John R. Cropper; B, returning to LNR Partnership and John R. Cropper the sum of forty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty, and seventy-six cents, which was paid to LNR Partnership and John R. Cropper in furtherance of the declaration of disposition of land; C, sending correspondence to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, withdrawing correspondence of Rudolph Clark LLC, sent to the department dated December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, regarding highway occupancy permit number zero six one zero two seven three one. I will add that I received an email yesterday from one of the attorneys for BVA and LNR indicating that some of the defendants intend to appeal order of Judge Griffith in this case, that appeal does not have the effect of staying this order or superseding Judge Griffith's order unless Judge Griffith grants a stay, which frankly, I think is unlikely. If Judge Griffith denied the stay, the appellant's without the ability to ask the appeals court for a stay. But nonetheless, we're under an order of court as it stands today to take certain action within five days, and my recommendation to the board is that we take that action by adopting this resolution.
Okay, any input from the board?
I think that with the appeal pending, I don't think that we should do anything until it's been finally adjudicated, because what happens if we rescind this settlement agreement, and then also, and their appeal is, is successful, then where, what happens to the township then? What, what position are we in? I mean, we, we know they're going to appeal, so I think that to rescind this today-
Well, do you want me to-
Would be considered, would be considered a intentional breach of the contract, which I know, as you all, I know, Kyle, you know, and I know, I don't know if Carl was here yet, but Martin Scherzberger won't cover breach of contract, and that's what I'm concerned about, and as far as a stay, as me being a party to that lawsuit individually, in my capacity as a supervisor, I will be appealing the order, which will create an automatic stay. So if we know it's going to be stayed, why, why rescind it and put yourself in jeopardy? So, if we know it's going to be stayed, why, why rescind it and put yourself in jeopardy and just let the courts decide? I mean, I think that, uh, we've been told to do this in the past from, from several different kind, different solicitors, to not put the carpet for the horse.
How do we know it's going to be stayed?
Because anytime a government, uh, official appeals, it's an automatic stay.
I think it's, I don't think it's an official, I think it's, if the supervisors-
It's not a board, it's, it's a government unit.
I'll leave that, I'll leave the law to the-
Kappa named me unfortunately as-
Learned, learned counsel.
Well, if the, if you want me to respond-
No, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think, I think at this point, um, um, a stay may or may not occur. It hasn't occurred yet, um, I've heard what I needed to hear thus far. Um, the judge has ordered this. Um, I'll turn it over to, to, uh, Carl, if you have any questions or you want to make a motion.
All right, well, the judge has ordered it, and if, if, if down the road it stayed, stayed, then you deal with it then. So, I would make a motion that we-
Why don't we amend the motion to compensate, if the stay is not achieved by X date, then we resolve to do this. And that way, it kind of protects us in a bit, you know, I mean, that way, it kind of gives us a little flexibility.
Any comment on that?
Well, a- again, we're under a court order to comply within five days. And I don't think we can, we can't delay that, in my view.
Well, it's Monday, so why not?
Possibly held in contempt. And, mister, the only entity that gets an automatic supersede is, is a governmental unit. That governmental unit is a township, not an individual supervisor. So, if the township does not appeal as a defendant, there is no automatic supersede.
But if I was named as a supervisor separately, I think that's considered, I'm considered a government unit, Tom?
Well, that's up to the court to determine.
Well, I just think that maybe we should-
So, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number Seven of twenty twenty-two in compliance with the court order dated April fourth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye. Public comment on non-agenda items? Anybody in the audience have anything on non-agenda? None. Uh, notice is the foundation meeting will be held directly after this board meeting, and I apologize if this took so long, everybody. Um, but we will, uh, adjourn for our, our, uh, foundation meeting. Everybody's welcome to stay for that as well. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second, all favor?
Aye.